...of Bedford County Council to order. This meeting will have just a little different rhythm.
(laughing) Picked me up.
Well, our mayor, C.G. Stanley, is not with us this evening, so like I said, things will move just at a little different pace. I gotta sort of catch up on things, so like I said, we'll move at a different pace, but we'll get through the agenda and get things done in a manner that's reasonable. We'll start with pledges, ladies, if we'll all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone has a chance to read the minutes. Any additions, any amendments to them? All right, then they'll stand approved. A report from the town manager.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Updike, Members of council. A few things covered tonight. Of course, one item on the agenda relates to our building official position. As people now figured out, Mr. McIver has retired, and we handled that according to his wishes. He did not want a large event, although we kind of had one anyway. Didn't want to speak mainly for the benefit of the public to report that Jeremy Marcus will be assuming the role of town building official, and later on tonight, we'll ask you to take formal action to appoint him. A little bit of background, Jeremy was actually hired as building inspector by Gary McIver approximately a year ago, and he's been training directly with him to take over in what has been a planned succession process. Also, wanted to announce that Daniel Field, who is a native of Bedford, has been hired to fill Jeremy's former position as building inspector. So ideally, we will continue on in the same manner in which that office has operated with the plan that Mr. McIver was a part of putting together. Also wanted to let people know, we are working to abate a significant drainage issue currently on Railroad Avenue. People probably noticed it. That came to light with the new development across from the 620 building. The repair work will be rather disruptive to private parking for multiple days, and once it commences, it can't be stopped. So we're currently making sure we have all the materials in place to get it finished once we start it, and the current projections for that to start within about a week. Also wanted to remind folks that the Bedford County Fair, which is an event presented by a private LLC, will take place at Liberty Lake Park from Friday, August 22nd through Sunday, August 24th. And also, just as a reminder to folks, the first day of classes for Bedford County Public Schools will take place tomorrow, August 13th. This will impact local traffic patterns, particularly during the morning commute hours and afternoons from approximately 2:30 to somewhere around 4 o'clock PM. We just ask that people plan and adjust accordingly. And that concludes my report for tonight.
May I have any questions for the town manager? Okay, appearances for council. Tim Brooke, if you would give your name and address, and for those making appearances, your comments need to be limited to three minutes, please.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Wow.
You can do it, though.
My name is Tim Brooke. I live at 840 Randolph Street, Bedford, Virginia. Let us pray. Almighty and most merciful God, we remember before you all, poor and neglected persons whom it would be easy for us to forget, the homeless and the destitute, the old and the sick, and all those who have none to care for them. Help us to heal those who were broken in body and spirit and turn their sorrow into joy. Grant this, Father, for the love of your son, whom for our sake became poor, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. A brief reading from Book Matthew. It'll be in chapter 25. And due to the time constraints, we won't talk about the parable that we're talking about here, but starting at verse 37, "Then the righteous will answer him." Lord, when did we see you hungry? When, and not feed you, or thirsty and not give you something to drink? When did we see you as stranger and not invite you in? Or needing clothes and not clothe you? When did we see you sick or in prison and not go visit you? And the king will reply, "Truly, I tell you, whatever you did for one of the least of these brothers and sisters of mine, you have done unto me." The reason why I've come here, gentlemen and ladies, is to tell you, there appears to be an escalation by the government against those who are homeless or under sheltered. Shall we call them the least of these? A couple of years ago, the town decided to lock up the bathrooms at Liberty Lake Park. One of the least proud moments in the town's history came in 2022, 17 degrees at night. We actually spent calories to roll up the plastic at the farmer's market. Being indifferent to human suffering is a very common condition, but to actually spend energy to make it worse is trending toward evil. I wanted to point it out to you, because most recently, I have seen a sign at the farmer's market that you cannot loiter, you cannot trespass, or you will be prosecuted under the town code. The first one is an unclassified misdemeanor, the second one is a class three misdemeanor. I acknowledge that there are problems at the farmer's market, but these problems should not result in the lack of public access that has been common to the farmer's market for the last 25 years, at least that I've lived here. I mean, there's crime along Longwood, but we ain't shut that down. So we've taken the farmer's market away, and what I'm here to ask the governing body is to take those hateful signs down. Do I have any time left? No? Thank you so much.
All right. Mr. Evans?
I am at the farmer's market.
Go ahead and give us your name and address. Name, name and home address.
Harmon Evans, P.O., Box 281. I've been home for several years, but I'm okay. But I'm home with the farmer's market pretty much on a daily basis, and I've seen people come in from all the town on not one occasion, but several occasions, to use those restrooms and all that stuff. You don't know if they come here to purchase a home, or come here to survey and see if they really want to reside here. So what I'm saying, as I said before, I'm there on a daily basis. I do on Mondays, Thursdays, Miss Grogan Normal, right across the street from the farmer's market. I know the food and stuff, and then several other things that I do around there. But I think that the people that surround, even homeless or non homeless, they should have the opportunity to be able to use that restroom, which is a public restroom, right? That's all I have to say, and thank you all, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else for a public comment?
Hey, anyone on the screen?
Yes, you can.
Erica McFadden, Good, Virginia. And you know me as a farmer's market manager, and when I put my ask out to you several weeks ago about more police presence and we had some vandalism, you guys came through, and I was very grateful for that. And I didn't pay a lot of attention to the wording on the sign. And when Tim brought it to my attention, it did get me to thinking that we can do a little better by our itinerant and population and folks who need that shelter. So I don't know what exactly that means, but I do back Tim up in thinking about our population who needs that shelter, when it gets cold, when it's too hot, when they need running water. And again, I don't know the exact solution, whether there's cameras, whether there's more police presence, whether there's just a helping hand where it's needed. I'm not exactly certain, but just to threaten prosecution, I don't know that that's the solution. And I don't know that that sign means anything to the population that needs that shelter. So if maybe we could give this a rethink, so we have both the safe farmer's market atmosphere and opportunity for folks who need that shelter to also be available. So I thank you so much for your time and your thinking on this matter, and I do appreciate your attendance to everything that I have asked you for and what Tim is asking for for now. So thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay. Your name?
Donnie Carter. I live at 1446 Belmont Drive here in town. I'm supporting Mr. Brooks here as well for the sign being removed. Our church is not too far from the farmer's market, and I've seen several people come from down the hill living to actually eat at the picnic tables or waiting to, for the Shepherd's World place where they can get the free food and the clothing, to see families there with their little children. And they'll go over there to sit, and maybe they're not new in the area, they'll have a place to sit or use a restroom. I've seen people eat there, and not all the time, but it's being used, so therefore, it's being used for public use, with the restrooms, and it should be, continue to be used. So I'm here to support Tim, like I said, and to prosecute, to put up a sign that will state that you be prosecuted. Like I said, we all got problems and situations you've got to deal with, but some things can be overkill. So thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? The public comment section is now closed. Council comments.
This week, we had a meeting, it was last week, we had a meeting about the strategic business, what's the name of it again?
Your downtown strategy.
Downtown strategy, thank you. We discussed that this week, and we had an organization come, give us a lot of interesting ideas and good things we can do to help improve the downtown area. The mayor has suggested that maybe we do a work session, and I'm sure he'll be scheduling that, have them come and present to the whole council their ideas. So I wanted to mention that, because that's a positive thing about the downtown area, we have moving, something moving forward with that. That's all I've got today.
Okay, well, thank everybody for coming today. Thank everybody for expressing your concerns and stuff like that. Other than that, I mean, it's been quite a couple of weeks here in town, so just wanted to mention one thing, the Elks Lodge will be having the first responders luncheon today on August 27th in the town here. So any first responders, EMS, fire, police, and the else, welcome to come to the luncheon down there at the Elks Lodge on Main Street, so.
Councilman Foster?
Well, thanks for coming and appreciate the comments, I really do. That's how the way we know what you're thinking, is coming in and letting us know, so thanks for that. Other than that, I really enjoyed the cooler weather last week, but it's been a quiet couple of weeks, so we'll leave it at that.
All right, I want to thank everybody, especially you all for coming, and thank you, Mr. Brooks, you know, for your comments. It's been powerful. Thank you for your comments, like echo what Mr. Foster said, you, we don't know what y'all thinking if you don't come and tell us. We take it in a very consideration. And I also want to thank everybody that's actually watching via YouTube, because I've heard a lot of people say, you know, they watch us via YouTube, but they can't make it. And also, I want to thank, for, last Tuesday, we had the national night out, and I believe it was approximately 250 people showed up there. They had everything from the hospital to the different churches, different types of organization there, especially, I think, policemen, all the policemen that were there, the state, local, and also a little bit of the county was there. And also, it was good to see them there, especially Connie Tuck for putting all this together, because I know it takes a lot to get everybody together and, you know, get all of the organizations there, and, you know, she did a very good job of putting it together. Also, I want to echo what the vice mayor said, I mean, the town manager said about schools starting, it's going to be busy, it's going to be raining, and especially the Burke Hill area, somehow, I will tell you from the past, the parents should like to get there before the school opens up, and it's going to back up towards Liberty Lake, and it's going to back up down Burke Hill, so avoid there around 7:30, please. That's all I got to say.
You got a flash and rene, right?
Might be sick tomorrow.
I don't know if councilmen are going to be able to help you this year, so what are we going to do about that?
You can volunteer.
I could. It seemed like we've had a couple of council meetings, but had announcements where we've lost past town employees. Heard recently that we've lost one of our public works, Roger Ruff, passed away. And my experience with Mr. Ruff was, he was a live wire. I mean, he was always laughing about something, even when he was complaining about something, when he would finish, he'd go, (laugh), you know, like, I mean, he was just, he was just fun to be around. And like I said, when I heard that his passing, it was like, yeah, there's, you know, there's another one that we lost, so hate to hear that. Just, like I said, just like we're a series where we've lost some past treasures kind of thing. I'd like to echo some of Councilman Evans' comments there about the national night out. It was a good event, police department, that was a win for the police department, good job, chief. What was the ducking booth, what was that money going to?
I went with that NAM, NAMM program benefit.
And we raised how much money for that?
A little over $200 bucks.
Good deal, good deal. Like I said, that seemed like that was success, and so it's a good deal. Again, thank you for all coming out, for the comments. The appearances before council, that's a welcomed part of the meeting, that's how we find out what's on your mind, and so thank y'all for your input, we appreciate that. All right, let's see, report from committees, I don't think we really had any committees that we really need to report back on at this point. No revisions to the agenda. Public hearings, we'll open up a public hearing, we have, we'll open up a public hearing for a conditional use permit for home state, tax map number 1922T in District 1, R1, this public hearing is now open. Anyone have any comments on that? Having no, yes, ma'am?
I'm a property owner, do you want to hear something, or no?
Do you want to make a comment on?
I'm not sure what question. I'm worried that Burke Hill situation tomorrow, so. We've been no arguing today.
Okay. All right, since here no, no comments, we will close the public hearing on the conditional use permit for the home state. And we will open the public hearing on a new grant funding for FY26.
Would you like me to? Notice is given, the town council will hold a public hearing for the purpose of considering a budget amendment, fiscal year 2026 adopted budget, for a net appropriation of $1,865,000 for a consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvement, or CHRISI, program grant, and an American World War II Heritage Cities program grant. Copy of the detailed budget amendment request is available for inspection by the public, has been in the office of the clerk, and anyone who wishes to speak to that is now invited to do so. Just a bit of background, although the net appropriation is $1.8 million, the town's share of the CHRISI grant at this point will be $385,000, and the World War II grant is $9,000 per sign, so. I know it's a big number, didn't want anybody to be concerned about that.
Is that how much the town is getting, or is that how much the town's giving?
That's how much the town will be getting, $1.8 million, if the grant's successful.
If it's breathtaking.
Big number.
So, do we have any comments? Okay, all right, so the public hearing is now closed. Nothing on consent agenda, we'll move into new business, appointment of building and maintenance official.
Building official is required to be appointed by the governing body of any locality that enforces the uniform statewide building code. This position also serves as the code enforcement officer who enforces all applicable civil regulations, including zoning and property maintenance codes. Gary McIver recently retired from this position. Jeremy Marcus has been employed by the town since September 23rd, 2024, based on his qualifications, certifications, and experience, and has been completing training with the understanding that he would assume the position upon Mr. McIver's retirement. Tonight, town council is requested to appoint Jeremy G. Marcus as building official for the enforcement of Part 1 and Part 2 of the Virginia statewide building code, as well as code enforcement officer for all applicable civil regulations.
Roll call.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second. In discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Motion carries with five members, present, voting aye.
Let's see, resolution for conditional use permit for home state?
On July 2nd, 2025, the planning commission held a public hearing to decide whether property located at 628 Baltimore Avenue- to decide whether property located at six-twenty-eight Baltimore Avenue can be recommended for approval of a conditional use permit for a home stay. The applicant and one adjacent owner spoke at the public hearing. The applicant described that she would stay in the house when she was in town and would like to rent it when she was not in Bedford. Citizen that spoke owns an adjoining house that they rent to a relative. He was concerned about transient visitors and dogs wandering off the property and requested a fence be added. The applicant noted she would like to add a fence in the future for her own dog. Planning commissioners asked when the owner may begin the rental program, to be sure she was aware that zoning approval must be used within a timeframe to remain valid. The owner was clear that the home stay use must be established from the business license by paying transient occupancy tax or through the annual registration process. A motion to recommend approval of the request without conditions was passed unanimously by the planning commission, and tonight, town council is requested to consider a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for the home stay proposed at six-twenty-eight Baltimore Avenue, tax parcel one-ninety-five dash two, dash two-T.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion.
There's a second? Motion by Councilman Evans, and second by Councilman Foster. Discussion?
So, I got a question. Is the lady still here, or she gone?
She gone.
Okay, so my question would be, is this a month-to-month basis, week-to-week, day-to-day, how is this home stay? I, I was reading through the home stay, uh, application, I also already, uh, the way it's set up in the state or whatever, so that's why I was asking that.
Yes, Mr. Haley, the, uh, home stay regulations say that anything that is not long-term is short-term, so under thirty days, so it just depends on how they may have a rental arrangement with someone through whatever platform they use, whether it's online like VRBO or Airbnb, or if they run it out themselves, it is just less than thirty days. So, it could be any variation of different days across a week, under a month.
So, it's gonna be pretty much like an Airbnb, one of those.
That is, yeah.
So, what about some of the concerns that some of the residents have, some of the neighbors fall out about fencing and stuff like that?
The one concern was about a fence, and, uh, they, the planning commission did not recommend a condition be placed because the owner said that she would like to put a fence for her own dog to keep it on the property as well, too, so there was no formal condition placed on that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Motion carries with five members voting aye.
Resolution, Federal Rail Administration grant acceptance.
Town staff submitted a grant application to the Federal Rail Administration in May of twenty-twenty-four for a consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvements, or CHRISI, grant with authorization from town council. Grant was requested to pay for the initial phases of the project for a Track Two, project for preliminary engineering and environmental review, to further the planning and design of a proposed new passenger rail station, necessary track and platform work, parking and multimodal connectivity to and from the station, and assessment of the impacts of the regional economy and traffic patterns. Town has been awarded the FRA reimbursable grant for one point, one million four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars with a twenty percent non-federal match requirement in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and I think I misspoke and said three-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, I'm over the gap. The grant agreement has a budget period of two years to be completed. The resolution passed by council on May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, provided that certain assurances and forms would be signed by staff as part of the application submitted, as well as committing the twenty percent required match. That resolution required council to affirmatively act on a grant award if one was made. In addition, the resolution stated that in order to execute and deliver any agreement that requires the expenditure of public funds on a specific project, further action of council was required. At this time, action is requested to accept the grant award, authorize the town manager to execute the agreement with the Federal Rail Administration, and to authorize expenditure of public funds for the grant match over two fiscal years. Following execution of the agreement, the town will procure a consultant to conduct the engineering and environmental review work per a scope of work that is being developed. Council will also need to include the grant award amount as an amendment to the adopted budget as a pass-through for the reimbursement, to reflect the correct balance of revenue and expenditure as follows. An increase in the revenue line item identified as prior year fund balance of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, an increase in the revenue line item identified as CHRISI grant revenue of one million four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, an expenditure, an increase in the expenditure line item identified as CHRISI grant expense of one million four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars, and an increase in the expenditure line item identified as CHRISI local match of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Line item budget increases for fund accounting purposes only will occur in the capital account, revenue account, transfer in general fund of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, and the capital expense account, transfer to capital project fund of three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Tonight, town council is requested to adopt the attached resolution, accepting the CHRISI grant and authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement with FRA. Council is also requested to approve the above budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-six, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts listed for the grant. I know the question that everybody has is what does this mean in the cosmic scheme of things? It means that we are moving forward and preparing to construct a passenger rail station if we are approved for such by the Federal Rail Administration.
So, is there a motion?
Some move.
All right, motion by Councilman Haley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Foster. Uh, discussion?
So, so this is just what we were basically saying before, this is just preparing for the future, this, the one-point-four, one-point-eight million is what it's gonna cost, uh, to do all the studies and plans and that.
That'll be funded by the grant and our share of that. We're basically saying that if we are successfully awarded the grant, we are committed to following through.
Okay.
We would apply for future funds in the, in the future, as going forward with, for construction. This is a Track Two grant out of the possible three, so the final phase would be construction.
And this is the design work. The construction, we think, is gonna cost approximately four and a half million, our share currently.
The original numbers we had were twenty-four million, your presentation that you saw from Department of Public Transportation, I think in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four, was twenty-four million, so you have to escalate those costs, because those will be in future year dollars, so right now you're at the one-point-eight million mark of, of that. So, any future construction funds, it would be a twenty percent match of that if we go after the same grant and then are awarded that. There are other pools of funds that may be available, I'm talking with Department of Rail and Public Transportation, since we are on the state corridor ID system.
So, when will we hear from this grant application, will it be any time frame?
Twenty-twenty-seven, it's a two-year grant from the Federal Rail Administration, so hopefully what we'll do at the end of that time period is use the findings of this, uh, work to then apply for the construction phase of that, and go through the same process again. It took us, you know, you, you applied in May of twenty-twenty-four, you got noticed last October.
Okay, and, and that construction amount, also, we would have a few years to come up with that.
Correct.
And our intent is not for the town to bear the entire cost of that.
More discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Motion carries with five members voting aye.
FY twenty-twenty-six, World War II Heritage Cities Grant Budget Amendment?
On July eighth, twenty-twenty-five, council adopted a resolution to accept a grant award and execute required documentation for a World War II Heritage Cities grant. At this time, staff is requesting for council to consider a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six adopted budget, which will appropriate budget funding for the grant revenue and related expenditures. Town council is requested to approve a budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to the general ledger accounts as follows, an increase in the revenue line item identified as World War II Heritage Cities Grant of nine thousand dollars, and an increase in the expenditure line item entitled World War II Heritage Cities Grant Expense of nine thousand dollars.
Is there a motion?
Some.
Yep, second.
Motion by Councilman Haley, second by, uh, Councilman Foreman. Discussion?
And so this grant money, is this going to signage and stuff like that throughout the town, for the World War II stuff, so?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion carries with five members voting aye.
I think that completes our agenda, with the exception of a couple of boo-boos by the vice mayor, I think we made it through safely. This meeting is adjourned.